Very good, thank you. Let's call the meeting to an order, uh, call the order, call the meeting to order, excuse me. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. All right, the warrants have all been signed. I just want to make an announcement, Kim is not with us this evening, she's ill. Hopefully she'll be back at the next meeting, but I'll wish her a speedy recovery.
A motion to approve the agenda?
Second, all in favor? Okay. Minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 22nd and June 29th.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Town administrator's weekly update.
Okay, just a couple of things for you. One is more informational that the O'Donnell's and Associates is out in town doing field work. They've picked up all of the building permits from April 1st of '21, current that she'll be committing taxes. So they've got ID letters on them, they've got badges, but they're pulling property cards and visiting anybody essentially that got a building permit of some sort in the last year. Next is our monthly York County Sheriff's Department update. It's always interesting. The first one is a, just a notable crash in, on Backroad in Chapeli. Appears that the individual fell asleep at the wheel. Next, on Milton Mills Road in Acton, there were some individuals that reported suspicious activity and they eventually tracked it down to a warrant and did a drug arrest. I skimmed through it because I'm trying to avoid the names, so I'm sorry. On June 8th, there was just a notable event, a torch run that included our deputy from Acton leaving the scene of a crash.
I'm sorry, what was that? Did you say torch run?
Torch run. For the Special Olympics when they passed the torch. On June 11th, looks like there was leaving the scene of a crash on an intersection of Youngs Ridge Road and Newbridge Road. They did find the individual from Acton and charged him accordingly. Criminal trespass happened on June 12th in Indian Village Road in Chapeli. A violation of a condition release for a resident in Chapeli. There was a mental health warrant issued for a female on Garland Road in Chapeli that was in crisis. Another warrant arrest for an individual in Chapeli. There was an indecent, in conduct of indecent exposure of an individual from Lebanon at the Mousen Lake boat area. They arrested him. And then to end the month, there was a disturbance of assault in Chapeli.
Okay. I've had a chance to see the officer around more in the last week, but maybe I just, I hadn't been seeing it, but do we get a report on their traffic stops and violations?
Yes.
Okay, there you go, I figured you did, so...
And he does go from, I asked the residents to keep in mind, he alternates from days and nights, weekends to weekdays. So sometimes if we think we're not seeing him, he may be on an evening shift, so we try to keep it sporadic. That may be year-to-date. No, that's monthly, that's for the month of June, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. Just my general recollection of looking at some of these reports previously, the motor vehicle stops seem to be low, not that we want to hand out tickets, but I just want to make sure that we're, we have the presence on the road and so on. Is this something we should, um, do we ever meet with the officer from time to time to get their feedback about how things are going?
No, but we certainly can.
We haven't have late, but...
Yeah, why don't we, maybe we could invite him to one of our meetings and he could just give a, an update on his, his efforts and how things are going and, yeah, that would be good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want this back?
Sure, I can just leave it there, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, next is a correction on my part. When we did appointments last week, I inadvertently told you that Lois Missoud was interested in being reappointed to the cemetery committee. She indicates that that was not her intention, so I apologize for misreading that email. Nevertheless, I want to thank her for her years of service. She's decided to step down from the cemetery committee so that the oath that you signed will just be destroyed because it shouldn't have been created, but David, I thought you might want to...
Yeah, no, appreciate, she's put a lot of time into the cemeteries in the area and it's going to be awful hard to replace there, so thanks for all the hard work, appreciate it.
She says she's leaving in good hands and she'll be available for information if they need it.
Great.
Last for you to start thinking about, as my department heads in the audience sigh, is the town report. We start thinking about the town report when our fiscal year ends.
Yes.
This was June 30th.
Yes.
So we generally start by giving them a deadline of the report.
By giving who a deadline?
Our departments and committees, we ask them for their yearly report.
So they actually write their sections?
Usually.
I see. That ought to be interesting, so...
And you wonder why it takes me so long to put it together. Yes, they write it.
I would love to see a schedule that sort of lays out when certain sections are due and...
That are due now.
Yeah, and, you know, what our estimated print date is and distribution so that we can keep an eye on it and make sure that we make progress towards that.
Usually what we're waiting for is the audit. Usually we have it 99%, 99% put together, we're waiting for the audit, but we need to pick a date that you feel is reasonable for the, you meaning the board, when you think that department heads and committees could have their reports in. And keep in mind, and these are usually a one-page report, so...
You know...
Well, it's over the fiscal year and it's already over, so I mean at any time they should be able to do that, so I can't see why we couldn't have that right off.
So today's 13th, you want to put a deadline?
I'm trying to distinguish some of the private conversations I've had about this versus public comment, but it seems to me there, there is sentiment by, that I've heard that the report had historically additional information that may have been dropped off over the years.
And actually I did, someone brought to me something that was, was held at one of the non-town events, I don't, I don't watch them, but because it followed my department, and one of them had to do, I think, with vital records, so...
Yeah.
People don't, I would encourage people that have concerns or make those statements to look into the state law first because...
Yeah, that's fine.
There's a couple of things, state laws have changed about what's public information. Acton used to list out all the births and deaths in the town report, that is absolutely true. Now we report out numbers and we do that for two reasons. One, privacy, there's now something...
Is that covered by law?
Well, there's something in the legislative now that you have to get written permission with those in there. The other problem that we have with Acton is that Acton borders New Hampshire and we do not have reciprocity with the state of New Hampshire. So if, if Rick's child is born at Frisbee, the town of Acton will never get that birth certificate. If, you know, Rick's great-great-great-grandfather passes away in Frisbee, we will never get that death certificate. And let's say Rick's great-great-grandfather was an asset to Acton, lived here for, you know, 100 years, he's going to be left out of that death report. There's nothing that I can do about that. So for a variety of reasons, that's why they were taken out. So now, and there are some marriages, especially we found with, when same-sex marriages became legal, they don't want their names in there.
I can understand that.
So it was a decision years ago with all that gathered information, and reciprocity really was the biggest one because we printed a town report that, that had a town leader missing from and under deaths, but he didn't die in Acton, he didn't die in Maine, he died in New Hampshire.
Well, I think this information is very helpful. Thank you for sharing that. Given that we're going to get ourselves organized in terms of assembling the report, I would use this time to encourage anyone out there or here that has any thoughts or comments about the annual report to send me an email about those and I'd be happy to consider those, spend some time talking with the select board about it, and if there's something we want to discuss at the next meeting, we can, but that's an open invitation to everyone. Share your thoughts and we'll see what we can do.
And there may be other areas that have changed outside of my department, I'm only answering for what I've changed. Everything else I believe we've done the same, so...
Okay, all right. Very good, thank you.
So what do you, so you want to give that a little time before we put a deadline, or do we want to send a memo out saying, please have your report in by such and such?
I mean, I think the department head should go, you know, write their report right up as soon as possible, I mean, that's not going to affect...
But if Tom's getting a feedback that things, you know, that changes or possible things are missing, do we want to be able to tell them first?
Different information from the department heads?
Yeah, I don't know what is...
What would be the...
I, I have no idea, David. I just, you know, Pete, there have been comments about the timing of the report and, and, you know, that was out there, but there's all, I have also heard comments about the fact that the report was much more robust than prior years, a lot of that has been dropped off. I think the things that I'd heard that have been dropped off...
Yeah, vitals is all in the way.
Quite frankly, you just, you know, provided some information, hopefully people now are aware of that. Let's just take a week. Let's, if anyone has any comments, they can either send me an email or they can come to the next meeting and, you know, during the general comment section, they're free to make whatever comments they want.
And if you, maybe next Wednesday, Tom, if you have some...
Does that sound all right?
Yeah.
I can pull the whole town report if you want that too.
No, no, a week isn't going to kill anything.
Right, but Tom's right, I mean, it definitely needs to get to print sooner, I agree with that 100%, but we're at the mercy of the auditor unless we don't put that in there.
A week's not going to hurt anybody.
Oh, no, a week's not.
Okay.
Okay. And the other thing, as you see to your right, there is some nice display of diapers.
I saw that, yes.
So I've always taken something in. So this is the donation from the York County Realtors, they got together and put a bunch of diapers together, there was a lot more there, and they divvied them up through the different municipalities. So we have free diapers, we are down to sizes primarily three, somehow we got a lot of threes. You have to be a resident of Acton or Chapeli, but if anybody knows somebody in size three diapers, send them my way.
So first come, first served, is that the way that works?
Yeah, but we have, they want us to verify that they're residents, so...
Sure, yeah.
And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Department head, committee chair updates? Any, anyone wish to make a report or an update? Department heads, committee chairs? Okay, let's move on. Whole business. CEO draft policy.
So last week, I presented to you a draft policy, oh, not last week, last time we met, draft policy. Jason does have some proposed changes to it and as administrator, I reached out to some other neighboring administrators on what they may be doing. It was kind of late in the day, so I don't have a whole lot for you and with Kim's absence, I'm going to ask that you table this until next week.
That's fine. I, I know Jason had a report, there was a policy that was...
Yes.
A one-page policy was drafted. I, I provided you a copy of a form that was from Old Orchard, I think, or...
Yep.
Which I thought was fine. I think at the next meeting, we really want to spend some time talking about what's an inquiry, what's a complaint, what's the code enforcement officer expected to do, what, you know, if he does anything, what requires the person to put their name and make it available so it's, it's in the public record. Some interesting dynamics there, that, options about how that's handled. You're, you're contacting some other towns to find out how they do it. Maybe we can get Jason to the next meeting and we can...
Yep, I was actually going to say that he's, he's been working very hard with I-Works, which is a company David will remember. We brought on with, right after Mr. Paul left, we brought on a CEO from a neighboring town that sold I-Works, sold the board on purchasing I-Works and then he left shortly after that. But nevertheless, we had already paid for it, so Jason has spent all this time building it to his standards, so he's going to do a presentation for you next week so that you can see exactly where this is. So we'll do both.
Yeah, we'll do both, sounds great.
And David, we'll, so we'll get a draft together and present it to you as a liaison mid-week and see what you think and bring it to them next week.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're talking about...
Policy.
Complaint, the policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, I had a phone, we had a phone call this week dealing with the code enforcement downstairs and this happens quite often and it's something that really the town doesn't, shouldn't be getting involved in is land disputes.
Between property owners?
Yes, and it ends up being dragged into town, town hall, one way or another. I think we really got to sit down with code enforcement, try to figure out a way to prevent us to be, being dragged into this situation, some sort of protocol of what, how we go, go about this because unfortunately it's hard when, when I was talking to the individuals, how do you explain that it's not part of our job to do this without, sounded like you just don't want to help them out?
Yeah.
You know, so, so it'd be nice to sit down, try to figure out a way to make this a certain protocol, this is what we, what we can't do, but this is what you should do. So if we can do that, that'd be good.
Were you also going to be in touch with MMA?
MMA, yes, huh?
MMA, thank you. MMA about this and see if they have some...
Yeah, they've got some sample.
Suggested practices?
Exactly.
Great, that would be wonderful. Before we move on, any comments now about that? Anyone want to make? Okay. Newbridge Road fence, who's got this?
So Mr. Adam and Mr. David were handling this.
Okay.
I spoke with the homeowner yesterday, a long conversation with him, explained what was going on. He's fine with signing off the responsibility for us on the fence, but it's basically just for plowing. We don't want to, if it gets damaged over the winter, we're not going to intentionally damage his fence, but it could happen.
Yeah.
And he completely understands and he's fine with whatever we have to give him to sign and he'd be happy to sign it.
Perfect.
So, which is good.
I, I want to contact Adam, you know, because we were trying to, you know, with the holidays and everything.
He had family there, he had a lot of cars that he did not want to interfere with his family over the fourth, he had his sister there for over a week and I waited till just a Jeep was in the driveway and I was able to catch him.
It sounds like he'd taken care of it.
Yes, yep.
He's going to sign, sign the waiver if we need to, so...
Okay. So we're going to have him sign it?
Yep, I can bring it to him or he can, I can have him come up here, whatever, whatever way you want to do it.
Oh, okay. I was trying to read what you were...
We, no, we, this is a good deal.
So, yeah, so our attorney drafted it, I'll need to make some changes to the date because...
Yep.
So I'll make those changes tomorrow and...
Just let me know when I can grab it and I can swing by his house, he'd be happy to sign it.
It's going to be witnessed, so is there any way he can just come up here and sign it?
Yep.
Just to keep you out of it.
Because he says he's got to come up and talk to Jason over some of his project.
I'd rather he was here.
Yep, that's fine.
Just to keep you out of it, just in case you do the damage.
That's perfectly fine with me.
Okay.
So we'll hopefully get that in the next few days and we'll get it on your agenda next week to sign and be done with it.
Very good. Siding update.
I spoke to the company and it looks like, hopefully within the next two weeks, weather permitting, they'll be starting on the project.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, we released the deposit, the second payment comes when the material comes and then third one to sign off, so we are moving forward.
Nice. Great. Robin, thanks for doing the side of the building, it looks wonderful. I didn't see any residual standing there, but I didn't give it a close look, but when the siding contractor's here, we might ask them if they have some kind of product that might be able to be sprayed on there that would clean it up even more, okay? Thank you. Roofing RFP.
So I had, I had drafted an invitation to bid for you based on the conversation that Adam helped me with and David. So the town of Acton is currently accepting bids for a full replacement of a metal roof at, a commercial metal roof at 839 Sanborn Road. This roof is approximately 40 by 30 and is a two-bay commercial steel garage. The project should also include replacement of insulation which must meet current code requirements. Interested bidders who would like to view the project should call Road Commissioner Adam Doliver to arrange at, the winning bidder must have liability insurance, proof of workers' compensation and a completed, completed I-9 before beginning the work. The deadline is to submit Wednesday, August 3rd, rest is blah, blah, blah. So it's just off the cuff because I didn't have a lot to go on other measurements and it's a sealed roof, that's what they told me.
Did you want to comment first or...
No, I mean, unless you know exactly what the roofing is called and the millimeters and all that, I, this looks good to me.
I, generally uncomfortable with, you know, not having specifications and just leaving it to prospective bidders to call, you know, in this case Adam, and, you know, get questions and I'm, you know, get, ask questions, get, you know, and have that be the basis for their bid. Not, when you get, when you leave it that way, everyone isn't necessarily going to get the same information and so it might cause them to bid in one way or another. So it's better to have the specification, they understand why we don't have those here. So what I would do is add to that the requirements that they're very specific about their material. I understand there was an issue with some of the fastening that was done previously?
Screws that went down, they were steel, they were steel.
Steel rather than galvanized or whatever they would be.
Roofing was steel, so it actually rotted around where the bolts were.
So I, I think they just need to specify their products, any methodology they're going to be using so that we understand when we get the bids and exactly what they're proposing to do so that we can look at those and make a judgment, not necessarily just on price, but also...
So price and recommendation on, on the fix?
Hmm?
Price and recommendation.
Recommendation on how they would approach it, what material, right down to the fasteners, the insulation. Is that really all they bring, are they bringing new roofing material on as well? So new roof, insulation, fasteners, is there anything else to this, David?
Adam, we're not, we're not looking at doing the insulating, right?
Yeah.
I would thought we had it all, well, but it doesn't have it.
So we'd want to make sure we put that in and...
It is.
Yeah, it is, isn't it?
Yeah, I guess it is, yeah.
So just get them to be as specific as they can be.
Okay.
So that we, when we get the bids, we know what they're planning to do and we can make a judgment on the, the quality of the product they're going to put in place with the cost and make a basis, a decision on that basis. That sound right?
Yeah, we just, well, we, you know, just ask them to give a description of the materials being used.
Materials, again, this is not my area of expertise, is there, is it just materials for the roofing material, the thickness?
The insulation.
The insulation, what would that be in our value?
That's commercial, that's commercial stuff, so it's, you know, it's a little bit different.
A little bit different, okay, see, I'm out of my depth. What are the fasteners, are they using galvanized? I, I don't know, what, would it be galvanized?
Well, you'd hope so.
Yeah, well, let's, let's make sure that we get that detail in there. Because they're the professionals, they ought to be able to recommend their approach and then we can look at that and decide which one we like. Comments?
You need to be careful with a metal roofing because there's so many different qualities. Example would be the stuff I put on my house, the paint on it's guaranteed for 50 years in salt air. So it's a lot better quality than, than you might buy at other places, say like Home Depot or Lowe's, which quite a few contractors do.
So we could add detail on finishes and provide...
And, and the metal.
Well, this stuff here, you're not buying it, we're not going to be buying this, this stuff in a regular lumberyard.
No, no, I understand that, but they're, but they ought to be able to specify what kind of warranty comes with it?
There, there's a big difference in the grade of the metal and the thickness of the metal.
Okay.
And a place like Brock's, you can go down there and get it, for example, that's where I got mine and they get it out of Pennsylvania, that's where it's manufactured, and the thickness of it is almost twice what it is with normal metal roofing you buy here locally.
Okay.
And the, the normal stock that they buy from, like Home Depot, is just low quality.
Sure.
So I just think that's, and I would think that Jason would be able to tell you, because I remember when Kenny Paul was here, when I told him I was going to put on a metal roofing, he told me not to touch this or touch this or touch that.
But that's not a code issue per se, it's more...
He's just saying the background, because he has a construction background.
Well, if he has background, you've already spoken to him about this, have you not?
He helped write it.
He helped write it and he couldn't get any more specific than what was in there?
Well, he's, he has some secretary, so he didn't have a lot of time to give because it's...
I see.
I, I just think Jason being in the construction world would know the difference at top.
All right.
I think what we've got to do, we've got to also in here, let's see, commercial steel, we want to, we want to make sure that the bid explains that this is a commercial, it needs to be commercial roofing, because this isn't regular residential roofing that's going on, this, it's a bit, you know, it's, you know, regular stuff, you know, it's a little rigid like this, it's got the big tall ridge on it. It's a, so what we ought to do is put it here to replace roofing as is or to, to existing, or how do I put it?
Well...
We want the same exact roofing we got now.
Existing standards.
We don't want somebody to come in and, you know, buy a real housing roofing to put on this thing. We want the same exact roofing we got now.
Adam, did I get the impression that you, you were having trouble finding someone interested in this project?
Yes, I made some phone calls, gotten them back, I spoke with PACO, I met with the gentleman down there. He looked at the roof, he was going to get me an estimate in a week. Numerous phone calls to their office, you don't get answers down there.
Did you call Hall Brothers in Berwick? Because that's who's done our other roofs and we've had excellent service with them.
Commercial roof's tough, there's only a small handful of people that'll do commercial steel buildings.
I got two, two people for you to call after meeting, I gave you their number for new commercial.
Somebody else told me about, Adam Brock told me about someone that does steel buildings also.
I mean, Hall's does, the guy doing the siding does, David, so we can hand, we'll make sure that we mail them an actual bid if we know the companies that, that do them, but...
Yeah, well, I think if you have multiple bidders and they're experts, they're going to be providing, and you'll get a variation of what they're proposing.
Absolutely.
And I think we'll be in a position there to judge what it is we're seeing, what kind of warranties are coming with this. It will be an open public process, so those who have expertise, please come, anticipate them.
If they're professional, they're going to come in, show everything they're going to do.
That's right.
Everything's going to be listed out and, you know, at the same time, you don't have to take the little bid, you take the one that's going to be the customer's.
That's right, that's right. So I, I was worried that we might only get one bid and so there's not an opportunity to do that kind of comparison.
I think you'll get a few.
Okay, great, great, all right. Okay.
The average roofing guy, you know, does residential...
Yeah, no, 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 no. Okay, sounds good. Any other comments? Okay. Recar show event.
A rec.
Rec, oh, excuse me. Rec car show event, thank you.
You're welcome.
What's this all about?
So as you recall, they came to us, they came to about an event on, possibly on September 11th, that they wanted to have a car show. There was already some sort of truck or tractor pull going on in the back, they talked about some kids' events and possibly allowing a liquor tent as well. We have spoke to the director, the rec director, David and I called her earlier just to make sure that she knew before we announced it publicly. It's really something that our insurance company is going to encourage you not to do for a variety of reasons. First of all, they don't encourage any event that has alcohol in which the town is named as the insurer, they're just always going to go against that. But the other piece too is the fact that someone else is using the fairground, that the rec is not in control over at the same time.
Yeah.
So if, if we're turning over our insurance for the entire property and something happens down there, you know...
So their advice is not to do this?
Not to do this on that date with, you know, a car show.
With other venues going on.
Car show, great idea, on, you know, on your own date, your own time, with no alcohol.
I actually, because Kim's out, I stepped in and talked to Sam about it, and explained to her that if she wants to find another day to do this event without the alcohol, she could do so. So, she's going to be trying to figure it out.
And she was fine with it, she understood, and she was expecting the alcohol piece anyways.
And typically, does the town sponsor events that have had alcohol in the past?
Never. Well, I say never, not that I'm ever aware of that we've done anything.
Okay, this has got an uphill fight then from my perspective, but we'll see what she comes up with.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on that? Any comments? Okay. Parking lot, rec parking lot.
So, David and Will, I believe, are handling that?
Yep, so, I went up the other night, Will and I were playing phone dag. So, I went up the other night and did some measuring, and came up with, I think, a proposed parking lot of 100 by 125, is that what we were talking about the other night, Will? Would you come right up here? Right now, the area that is cut out by the fence is 145 feet, and then it was 190 feet deep, then 115 across, so it wasn't square. So, to fit everything in there where we can get it, we figure between your slopes and everything else, and keep trying to keep some sort of grade, say such as like a 3% grade. The ability to get your slope on the backside, we're talking 100 by 125 foot parking lot. One question I had was, and I asked Will last night, and we just got the answer from, what's her name, Lori?
Well, Sam, they're messaging me now about it.
Back and forth, and whether or not we had a permit, state permit for the road opening, because, I guess we don't.
No, no, I didn't look into that.
Yeah, well.
But they're, for some reason, not determined, they're under the impression that they're using the same entrance. And I'm reading the messages between them, that they're sending me the same ones, and it says, "That's always been the entrance, so you'd be able to fall under the original permit because it's the same entrance."
No, no.
This is, we're going down one.
Down the road, 100 some feet down the road. So, what happens is you have to have a permit through state. Unfortunately, there's a spot there where it looks like they may have, I don't know if they ever received them back in the day or not, but even if they did, the problem is, is now there's a driveway across the street from it. Typically, the state doesn't allow a driveway entrance across from another driveway entrance. It's not directly across, but we want to make sure. So, before we put this out, we got to make sure that we got this permit in hand so that in case they change a location on us, in case there's more tree cutting, in case they want to cove or anything. So, we're trying to figure out right now whether or not Sam, Lori, or am I going to have to take care of this?
I think that somebody needs to have, based on what I'm reading, and I, somebody needs to have a conversation with them first.
Obviously, they don't know what's going on if they think that we're using the same entrance.
And without them being here, and like I said, she's sending me screenshots and messages, so let's agree to look into it a little more. We believe that, you believe, William, you agree that there needs to be a driveway permit from the state.
Yes.
Let me look into it and get one of them working on it.
Did Jason give you, can you get the permit, the application through the coast downstairs?
I have one.
You have one?
Yeah, I haven't filled it out or nothing like that yet, I just, I have, I have one, but that's.
Okay, okay. Well, and you got it from Jason, correct?
Yeah, well, there's second territory there.
Yeah, okay, it came from downstairs, so you don't have to go online or anything. I haven't applied for a state permit forever. So, I guess when we get the permit, we get the ball rolling. We really want it, because, you know, it's going to take a while, they're not just going to show up tomorrow and tell you, give you a location, we're going to make an appointment with them.
So, we really can't issue any RFP on this until we get that detail. So, August is looking doubtful.
How long will it take the state, do you know? Have you done some of these other ones, either one of you?
Geez.
They want to come look at it.
Yeah.
If it has a municipality, do we have any clout with them? Will they come out?
No, they don't.
I mean, we put signs up for them all the time and help them out.
Yeah, that doesn't really matter.
I tried.
So, they think that, so they don't think that we're, I mean, because I've had the same intentions we're going in where we're going now, like down the road.
All right.
Can you deal with the access point separate? I know it's going to tie into what you're doing there, but can you at least do the parking lot and then go through the permit process to figure out where the cut needs to be?
Well, what I'm worried about is if we put this up, like we talked.
Yeah.
And you get into the bid process, you know, you get a price on it, and then they decide, okay, we know we want to shift this down 50 feet down the road. Now, you got tree cutting, if they put a cove in, we don't want to have another bid. I like to do it all at once if possible, so.
So, this is, they've given me this to read to you. So, Lori says that the driveway that we are making was the original driveway when it was created, and then the spot of the driveway is supposed to go, the spot the driveway was supposed to go was to be included in the original permit, so they don't.
Can we, in terms of those additional items we'd have to incur if we change the access point, can we handle that as an add alternate on the bid process? So, we can get the bid going, get the parking lot done. They could bid for the lot and changing the access as a separate one. Go through your permit process, figure out whether or not you need a, we've got to change it or not. If we don't have to change it, would we want to? Or would we prefer to be able to use the one we have?
Wouldn't, you don't think it'd be better if it was pushed down the road another 25 feet?
You mean whether Red Gate is now down a little bit farther?
Because right now, you're driving right in at the field, then you've got to bring a left, instead of turning right into the parking lot.
Yeah, if we went down probably like 10, 20 feet, it might be a little bit, and you've got to pull in straight, but I mean, I don't.
I mean, it doesn't matter, I mean, I'm just asking whether or not.
I mean, because the opening was kind of there, and we were just shooting.
So, let's bid it as, what I would call, bid it as two items, if you can.
Well, I don't know if I'd do that, I mean, it's up to you guys.
No, no.
You can't really bid it on the two items, because we don't even know what the second item would be.
I mean, somebody's going to have to make a road to get in there, you know, usually start from the road, you know, work your way in when you get ready to go, so. So, they swap a road.
That makes sense, okay. Just trying to get this thing going.
Parking lot, the parking lot that's going in, there's no, nothing counted in for the driveway now at all?
You mean like a permit?
Well, no, forget about the permit, is it etched in where you expect it to go? Is it, are the trees are cut where the driveway is supposed to go?
There's a gate there.
There's a gate there, there was.
So, what we're afraid of is that.
Temporary thing, it was used when they built the field back originally. But it was never an actual driveway.
And that's directly from someone else's house, is what you're saying, onto, on.
It's just offset a little bit, but because that was there, I'm not sure if the permit was ever issued back in the day.
So, we need to help encourage them to make that the driveway?
Yeah, if I have to, I can give the guys a call up in Scarborough and see if I can expedite it, you know. I'm working right down the street there, I can go down and see them anyways, but what I got to get is a address. Do we have an address on that field?
Yes.
Yeah, I need an address on it, and Will needs some pole numbers, I'll go get that. Just give me the address, I'll go get the pole numbers, and we'll have to mark it. You got to give them a center line where you want it.
So, for our next meeting, you think we can have a bid document ready to know exactly? Fine, let's put it on the agenda.
So, we're going with a smaller size, I mean, because the rest of it I can start working on.
You kind of have to, because the problem is, is with the, you know, I talked to Will about this the other night, was you've got a area that's 145 feet wide, the fence side, okay? And then down here, you're only going 115, okay, so you can't square it off. Plus, you can't just build the parking lot out to the trees.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have to bring it in enough so you can get the water off the parking lot, drainage. Then on the downhill side here, about five or six feet difference in elevation. So, you know, you lose three feet on 3%, you know, by the time you get down to the end there, you're going to have to have a slope on the downhill side. So, you're going to lose 25, 30 feet on the downhill side just because of the elevation difference.
So, what size is it going to be in the bid?
100 by 125, I believe, is going to be sufficient.
Yeah, that's what you said.
Because what it's doing is just narrowing it up so you can get your drainage and your slopes.
So, other than the size, what else does the bid need to specify, so I can at least have a majority of it ready?
What I would specify, 70, 30 foot wide entrance, 20 foot wide drive. You have to have wide enough, two cars passing on a corner radius. And a parking lot, 100 by 125, with a foot of 3 inch gravel, crush, crush gravel?
Yeah.
Finished with one foot of what, 3 inch crush gravel?
Three, did you say 3 inches?
Not finished, I said install.
One foot of 3 inch.
3 inch gravel.
Crushed gravel.
And 3 inches of, inch and a half or a 3/4 crush gravel to finish.
And that's the finish level?
Finish, with no more than a 3% pitch.
How many cars can we get into that, to that area now? Have we figured that out?
This will be as big as the area they got now.
Yeah, it'll be a good size, I mean, I'd probably say like 15 or so.
In other words, is this going to solve the parking needs down there?
I personally never seen the cars, I mean, that's what we're doing, I've personally never seen them on the side of the road, but.
This is what has been reported, that they're parking on the road.
This is, this is a good start on, I just, with the, like, I think you were telling me the other night, that, you know, we're only allowed to cut so much.
Yeah, what you see cut now is that, I mean, that, Jason didn't want us to go no bigger because, you know, we got, getting into like resource protection and all that, that stuff. So, we cut, you know, we cut like probably just more than, not more than we should have, but we're close to what we need to be.
By the way, are you putting your time in for the work you're spending on this? For the time you're spending on this? I would encourage you to do that.
I did talk to him about that, and I said, anytime.
You should be compensated for your efforts on this, you know, you're putting in hours, put it in. Okay?
Thanks a lot, Will.
Yeah, thank you. Country, any comments on this before we move on?
Yeah, hi, Joyce Backshee. I was just remembering back when we did a commercial parking lot here in town, and it seems like every 10 spaces, you have to have a berm put in. And is that something that should be in the bid request? It's one of our ordinances, that we put a berm every, so many spaces.
You have an ordinance that you have to put a berm in?
Yeah.
It's not a requirement from the planning board?
Yeah, we had it.
That's going to put the kibosh of that parking lot.
Well, is that, but is that considered commercial? I mean, I'm thinking commercial that she's dealing with, maybe like Grammy Rose. I'm thinking of her commercial projects on the planning board, would this be a commercial?
That was my point, is this commercial?
I would.
And I would say, a quick question to Jason.
It is valid.
Does, do the zonings define commercial?
Well, we're going to ask Jason, I mean, there's been some changes.
I have to ask Jason for that.
Well, we have a couple people here that know those codes inside and out, do they define?
You're going to turn this into a million dollar parking lot.
Well, I don't think any of us want to, but.
No, not at all.
That's what you're going to do.
And David, it was a pain in the neck.
Bring this issue to Jason.
Try to plow that.
Let's find out, and.
I couldn't imagine plowing that down there, I mean.
Oh, no, and that's where common sense.
Yeah, I know, that's crazy.
Well, I will ask.
And if we have to, we could always, I don't know, I suppose we could file for a waiver on this, whatever it's called.
That makes the other parking lot not up to standards either.
Which one are you?
The one they're using.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Doesn't even make our parking lot out here up to standards.
I personally, this doesn't sound like a commercial lot, but there must be definitions in the zoning. Okay, very good. Anything further on that? All right, country road.
County.
County, jeez, I've got to get my glasses checked.
I thought I typed, put an R in there, but that sounds like the. County Road, David.
I asked to put this back on.
And before you get far, there is an email in there from, in your packet, from the deputy?
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't help us out at all. Pretty much what he's done is he's just given information about seasonal postings.
Yeah, but he wrote you an email too.
Oh, he did? I didn't see that one, I guess.
Go ahead and explain, I'll find it.
So, yeah, I guess I did see part of that. So, last week, well, not last week, the week before, because I keep forgetting we took the last week off, that we decided to post county road. And I think it was probably on my part, a little bit of knee jerk reaction on the weight. Because we do have to do something there, but I do think that we may have dropped the weight down to the point where it's really hurting everybody in the area that isn't using that. And you've got individuals that maybe hauling gravel over to the private site over on, say, Fox's Ridge. It's really, really not a, you know, they're not repetitiously hauling every day. So, I think we want to relook this a little bit. I did ask Adam not to have the signs made up until we talked about this again, because I talked to the deputy today, and he's trying to figure out whether or not, how he's able to enforce it, this and that, so I really want to get another.
So, you just want to table this?
Want to table this for another week until he comes back with some more information. And I did, I did, where was I? I was just looking at it here. Because the thing was, he's like, I don't have scales on my truck, this and that. I said, well, that's not what we're asking, we're, you know, asking you, you know, what we're going to post for GRVW, meaning registered weight, so all he has to do is look at registration. But at the same time, that works and it don't, because I thought about it today. I got trucks registered for 80,000 pounds, because I put a trailer on to get my max weight. The truck can only haul 54,000, so I'd be under the weight to say if we did 60,000. So, we got to figure out a way to make this fair for the locals that are still using the road, and whether or not we post it for local traffic only, or whatever. We just got to figure this out, and I think we probably ought to make some phone calls before we go putting the signs up.
Okay. Let's do it right.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Any comments? All right. Hazard mitigation plan. This was the chief?
Yes.
Who had to leave? So, he's provided us a, did you send that to us electronically?
I did, yes.
You did, I'll have to go back and find, it was a number of pages, right?
Yes, almost 30.
30 pages, and this is done annually?
Yes, it basically allow, and because I knew he was going to be here, I didn't go through it because I was expecting he would be able to do that. But essentially, it allows them, it allows them to, although I'm wondering now, looking at it, because it was an attachment of 30 pages, but, I'll go back to the email. It allows you to accept FEMA funds, but let me go back to his original, because it might have been 30 pages of the same thing.
Well, you know, he's not here.
Okay.
So, and I believe Jen spoke to you about this.
Yeah, yeah, this is what we signed.
What we'd like to do going forward is whenever there is a business transaction, like a contract to be signed or a purchase that may be outside of policy, we would ask department heads to provide that information a week before there's an expectation of any kind of vote, so that the selectmen and the town administrator have an opportunity to review the material, so they aren't just coming in and we're sort of signing off on something that we haven't thoroughly reviewed. So, we have that agreement now?
Yeah, and if I, just a bit of clarification before we say too much on it. So, when I look at this attachment, so it is 30 pages because it goes to 30 different towns. It's all the exact same documents.
Okay, so it's not.
See where it says thereas, therefore, the town of Acton, the next one is the town of Alfred, the next one's the town of Arundel, so it's only one page, Tom.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, so that makes.
I didn't want us to say something that.
Why don't we take, as we had planned, well, generally, we're going to, in general, we're going to ask for this material in advance on any sort of contracts or business transactions. We can look at that and have a chance to review it, talk to who we need to, and then we'll take it up for consideration at the following meeting. So, we'll do that with this as well.
Yes.
Very good.
Because it does reference.
It's fine with me.
Great.
It's fine with me.
Any comments about this? I assume not. District 1, scope of work.
In front of you, you have a West Shore Drive and Willow Street document. He's going to go over, and he's going to tell you about the letter he mailed out as well.
All right.
We're going to want to be paving in West Shore Drive this year, I'm going to do the whole road. So, I put a scope of work together in there, that's to do the whole road, you know, prep it for paving, ditching, whatever we got to do on Willow Street. So, I, you know, I made it kind of realistic as possible, so. So, that's what we plan on doing in there, so.
Is the scope of this work pretty typical when you do a paving on a road in town?
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, we got some.
So, it has, you know, the details of what you're planning to do with ditching and culverts and so on. That's the kind of work that you would typically do whenever you're going to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Be rehabbing a road?
Usually every year, so. I think there's like three, I think there's three or four culverts we have to replace, not the big ones, small ones.
How do you determine that West Shore Drive needed to be done as opposed to, you know, some other road in town?
Because the section from the big culvert up to Willow Street's getting pretty bad, and, I mean, you drive them off, you know, I mean, you know.
No, I'm trying to understand how you make that assessment, and are there other roads? Is this, is it purely your judgment about which road is in the worst shape? The amount of travel it gets?
Yeah, I mean, I ride them enough, you know, like that road there, there's one particular section, we've been putting a lot of coal patch in there, you know, the shoulders are breaking off and everything. And, yeah, it's been getting quite a bit of traffic lately, and all the work being done in there, you know, it's putting a pound in on that road, and it probably really wasn't meant for all that, so.
Have we gotten, I'm fine with doing this project, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand how we prioritize which roads need to be done in what sequence? And I didn't fully understand all of what was being discussed, but wasn't there an issue with Buzzell Road?
That's Adam's road.
Have I got that right?
Well, yeah, but that's Adam's side of town.
It's, okay, all right, so, all right, but.
On your side, this is one of the most.
Personally, like on my side of town, like no offense to anybody, like my roads are pretty good for what they are, so.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, you know, Adam's got, you know, some bigger issues than I do, so
He's got Levitton Road.
Oh, Adam.
Okay. Because we just gotta call on that.
Well, like West Shore Drive, like if you were to drive down like any one of my roads right now, West Shore Drive's probably like, you know
West Shore Drive's the worst road.
Is worse road than that.
Wow, that's
I mean, like, you know
How long's that been?
Been like that?
I mean, that was done, it just seems like
A long time ago.
Was it a long time ago?
It's gotta be 10 years ago. And when they did, they just put an overlay over. I don't think they even changed any culverts when they did.
Oh, no, there's nothing's changed.
I'm probably gonna step in a hornet's nest here, but if we have other roads in town that are in worse shape
He would do them.
He's stepping in the worst, doesn't he?
So he's elected, he's elected It has nothing to do with the fact that you live on the road.
I mean, the town, the residents don't care.
No, I mean
What zone it's in, they just, you know, if they've got some really bad roads, why am we dealing with
I mean, if you're worried about that, Tom, I think if anybody was to drive down West Shore Drive, they'd realize it. I mean, you take the first section, you know, up between like the first, like, before the big Yeah, the first mile.
Yeah, I know.
Every time it rains, the center of that will blow right out.
I understand, I understand, I'm just
Actually, during budget time, I mentioned that, you know, because I
Okay.
Going down it, I dropped
So you've got the current road commissioner and the previous, both saying it's the worst side, worst road on that side of town, so
Okay.
I'd say we'd make a motion on that.
If you drive up the H Road, yeah, but I mean, that, that's in pretty good shape, for what it is.
Okay, yeah, the H Road actually is, yeah.
It's not bad.
No, no, with the work you did on the shoulders. Okay, so we have this scope of work document?
Here's the original, if you're ready to sign.
Okay. David, have you reviewed this?
Yeah, I mean, I think these are silly. I've always thought they're silly, because I don't believe that we should have to do these. Because I think we're gonna have to do it, but, so we're just looking at estimated numbers.
So they put in, the actual invoice that they're gonna surprise?
No, this, all this is, all this is, is, and don't take this the wrong way, Will. Guesstimating numbers. Because all you're doing is guesstimating. And so he's slapping some numbers down, so he can present it to us, so we can say, go for it. Because we have no idea without actually walking down and with no experience with that guesstimating.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I'm
I might do, but you don't.
No, that's why I'm turning to you, David.
But I mean, I, but I'm not down there walking through the job with a scope of work with him either, so and it wouldn't be professional of me to tell him, no, I think you should be doing it cheaper. So this is his, this is what he wants, this is, you know
The road commissioner ordinance that voters approved has this one little line in there. And that line indicates that the road commissioners shall present these scopes of work in advance. So that's why we're doing that.
There was no, nothing saying exactly what the scope was, it's just
I see.
Like, I try to buy it as realistic with the numbers.
Are we really authorizing a scope of work, as opposed to an estimated fee?
What we're doing right now is we're literally gonna, you know, okay, 41,998, 96, up to that point.
So if it goes over?
He has to come back to us, right?
Right.
And, and ask for more money.
But, you know, you can keep a pretty good idea. I mean, every week, you know, you guys see the bills. I mean, if it gets up there, you know, I just have to come back.
So it could be less than this?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's an actual, you know, time and material and equipment charge?
Estimate.
This is just an estimate? Okay. All right. Any comment? Anything further on this?
Oh, no, I have something else, once you guys get
Okay, so why don't we go on to that? What else did you want?
Can you motion design that one?
I wanted to get, I wanted to create an opportunity for comment. So if we can hold the motions till the end? Okay? Why don't you go through, what else you have?
Just one, I, I meant to come up during department heads, but I talked to the engineer today for the Big Culvert on West Shore Drive.
Good.
We have two sketches that are in final drafts right now. And then the in-kind, the sketch for the in-kind replacement, they've gone back and they've kind of tweaked some numbers and looking at some different areas, you know, different possibilities of using that, you know, what we can put back in there for a culvert, because they didn't feel it was they weren't comfortable with giving us what they had already. So they had their sketch designers go back. So I would say, she was promising me the, probably the first of next week I'll have them, and they're, they're short-staffed themselves, so they're they're trying, they apologize, they think, they know it's
So our next meeting, possibly, we could have?
I, I mean, I wouldn't go, I mean
They're not committed, but hopefully
We get it next week, it'll be a plus.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they, they know it's been a little long, they apologize, but they're, they're trying, they're pushing this as
That's fine.
And I call like, once a week, and
Yeah.
You know, and I, and they don't want to miss any steps with this, so
I'd rather do it right.
They're, they're, they're doing, they're doing their part, so
Good, good. All right, thank you. So let's go back to West Shore Drive Road. The scope of work.
Yeah.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve $41,998.96 for the West Shore Drive project.
I'll second. Any public comment?
Want more?
I did, Jennifer helped me, and we sent a letter out to all the residents.
I received mine, thank you.
So everybody should have got there, so we'll hopefully be in there next week, getting started, so
Very good, very good. Any public comment? Yes? Lee Robert tore West Shore Drive?
Yes.
Any idea on the time for the, for the work?
We're gonna stop next week, then I think by September, in September, we're gonna pay. That's the plan.
So it's gonna be under construction that entire period?
Well, yeah, we'll be in there working, you know, I mean, the road
It's not gonna be totally disruptive to the
No, it'll be one lane traffic.
Okay. Okay. In sections, or the whole road?
Yeah, in sections.
In sections, that's what I would have thought.
You work a section, move a lane open.
I know originally, you were trying to coordinate that with
Oh, no, this isn't the Big Culvert.
I know, I know. Originally, you were trying to coordinate the road
Yeah, I know, we're just
Wait, wait, I assumed it got to the point you had to deal with it.
Yeah, right, we're gonna keep it open one lane all the time.
Okay.
Tom, I just want to clarify that I mentioned that that blurb was in the ordinance, it's actually in the warrant, so it's something that you guys could, could adjust if you wanted, but the both of the articles for the warrant for the road guys say, said funds to be dispersed after a project list, including line on item budgeting, has been presented to the select board to be expended. So it's the actual warrant at town meeting that had that line in there. So if the board so chose those scope of works weren't necessary, you could think about that next year at warrant time.
Okay, thank you.
For me to clarify, it's not the ordinance.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Can you just initial the original for me?
Yeah, you gotta, is this the original? I think this is the original. And just sign it anywhere, is that the way this works?
Yes.
Okay. What's the date today? 13th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. District Two, scope of work. Adam?
So in front of you, you should have his New Bridge Road, and there's no original there, so you can sign any of them if you so choose.
Yeah, New Bridge, over the winter, we have extensive water issues. When Joe paved it, he never did any of the driveway culverts, so they're collapsed. Couple of them are collapsed. And so we have a couple driveways that a lot of runoff come off, and freezes the road, so constantly going down there every morning, or Will has to deal with it. Freezing issues, we did a quick fix over the winter, but I want to get that culvert, it's one of those driveways that's collapsed, and it's just filling up the culvert, kind of spilling out with the runoff when we have a lot of rain, and then it freezes at night. So I want to get that area ditched and all that area flowing properly, so this winter, we do not have any ice floes.
Okay.
It was my goal.
Thank you, anything else?
No, that's it.
Just that one project, correct?
Just the one project for next week.
Okay. Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve 857616 for the New Bridge Road project.
Second. Any public comment? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Have I got the original here somewhere to sign?
Those came off the printer, so any
Oh, did you just sign this? Okay. Okay. All right. Town Hall what? Jennifer?
So, as you know, you put the article forward to ask the voters to spend ARPA money, so I kind of wanted to see what direction that was going in as far as going out to bid. Per conversation that, that we had, David, we, we reached out to an individual, so when we got the water test back, and we've gotten the same results of the water tests, with those three items being high the last couple of times that we tested. But in an effort to make sure that we're neutral and unbiased, we reached out to a company that has a very strong water background, but would never bid on this type of filtration system, because it's just not something they do, and it's a very reputable company in York County. Basically, to go over the results with him, to say, you know, this is what it's high in, what do you recommend? Is it something we can just get by? Do we really need to address it? Because he's not trying to sell us anything. And not to take away from the companies that we've spoken to, we just want to make sure we're spending the tax money, taxpayer money correctly. He did have concerns, especially with the chloride. He's actually used some of the same words that Nelson used when we called them originally. He said that anybody with diabetes, high blood pressure, any type of kidney, and even people of a particular age, should not be drinking that water. He was happy to hear that Nelson had us tape the results by each one of the faucets. Talked about bubblers, I told him we were doing all of that. That was his biggest concern out of the three, but he did indicate that, I mean, originally, he didn't realize that we were drinking it or using it for lion's club breakfasts, or those types of things, but he said the EPA standards were there for a reason. And we, you know, if we're going to
I'm sorry, he said what?
The EPA standards are there for a reason.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And we weren't close on the, on the mag and the iron, we were, you know, four or five times over the standard, and we've tested it more than once. So he did concur with Nelson, water analytics, who, they also don't, don't run the business. Or don't, you know, do filtration systems, that it should not be being used by people, especially with those types of medical conditions. So, I mean, you can either let it continue to rust the pipes, and shut it down to public use, you know, cooking and those types of things, or you can spend some sort of money, whether it's a minor filtration system, or the was that osmosis, what do you call the other?
Reverse osmosis?
Yeah, that
Who has brought that item forward? Was that you, David, or?
Well
Well, we
Or was it Nelson, or who?
Well, no, we, we were looking for some way to spend the COVID, COVID money.
Yeah.
What do we call that?
ARPA.
ARPA funds.
Yeah.
And at one point there, we did start talking about the water, and that's when, originally, I think we were gonna put 10,000 full, or something like that.
We reached out to a local water company. We didn't ask them about an osmosis system. We reached out and gave them the water test, brought them in, did a tour, looked at the pipings, we talked about, we've had more than one insurance claim in the past 10 years, because of burst pipes, because of the salt, or so they say. We brought a company, a local company, and said, look around, look at these results, what would you recommend? And they're the ones that mentioned that. So it's not to say when we go out to bid, that it, that you have to put the bid out for this remote, you know, reverse system.
A solution.
A solution.
Okay.
Maybe that's a little more broad.
I had talked about the reverse osmosis because of the, the salt that was in, in the well. And, but whoever looks at the, the testing, or does the testing, will tell you what you gotta have, whether or not it's a reverse osmosis, or it's that's the only way to get rid of the salt.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it might be another routine, route, but the levels of salt that we have in it, it sounds like that'll be the way to do it.
So the bid would be general, we would provide the test results, and asking bidders
Make a recommendation?
To make a recommendation on how they would approach solving this problem?
I would say that.
Because each reverse osmosis has different types too.
Okay.
So they're gonna give you, you know, what the solution that needs to be
And knowing nothing about water, and, and, you know, always remembering we're on camera, I mean, is a remote, can they do a filtration system, or is that the same thing? Do they have to do this? Or will filtration system not take out that kind of salt?
I don't know, I guess we'll find out.
I mean, I just, I have no idea, I don't even know what the reverse, I mean, that's the water going in through some system and coming out.
Very well could be the system item.
This might be, it's great that you reached out to this firm. They're not gonna be participating in this bid. They have expertise in this area. Maybe we should
When the bids come in?
When the bid come in, maybe we should engage them to help us evaluate those bids and consider alternatives, and
Yeah, and they're very
And so we have sort of a independent firm that we can rely on, that will tell us what the right thing to do is here.
Good idea.
Fair enough.
So if it's gonna be that simple, as far as enclosed, please find the town of Acton's results, last couple of results, I can just, we'll just draft something out.
We'll draft something up, yeah.
Okay.
Any, so no motion tonight on this. Any comment? Okay, great. Thank you. And moving right along. COVID, ARPA bonuses, so you've been busy.
No time. So, at town meeting, the townspeople voted up to 72,525. And during budget season, the conversations from the board was that they wanted it to be a, a set amount based on the hours worked. And our previous treasurer had that all laid out. The struggle happened when we started working on grossing up.
Yeah.
Because everybody's, everybody's settings are different, you know, I make claim nine, you claim zero. So it turned into a project. We involved Tom's expertise, our auditor's expertise, our new treasurer trio, as far as what their system can do. This is where we're at. So we have come up with a, with a way to, so you had $250 stipends, $500 stipends, $1,000, and $2,000, based on how many hours they worked. If we motion tonight to, based on flat gross-up amounts for each one of those categories, we will spend $71,948. Now, it is possible that your, everybody's gonna get this, everybody that gets $250 are all gonna gross up $349.
That's right.
And based on, and we're gonna take out the same, we're gonna take out 15.5 federal, and we're gonna take out the same rate
Federal, FIC and state.
Right.
Yes.
So it should be, everybody's gonna be So it should be, everybody's going to be-
So it's the same rate for everyone on those. That's right.
Instead of trying to do it the other way, which was hand manipulating based on how you claimed.
No, 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 no.
We only got through, yeah.
That was at the suggestion of the auditor, wasn't it?
That was not, you're saying?
No, she, didn't she suggest doing that?
No, she suggested not to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it was-
This is a standard approach, from my perspective, to doing it.
This is where we need to be. Everybody-
And we're within the warrant amount.
$71,948.
And we're, the net pay is what we had disclosed as net warrant.
Well, we didn't disclose, during budget season, we talked, yes.
We talked about it in that, for that. Okay.
It really wasn't defined, because I think probably at the end of the day, I would have looked at it differently. Because typically, when you've got like a Christmas bonus or something like that, say someone gives you a $500 bonus, you get a $500 bonus, then they take tax out of you. What we're doing is, we're saying you're going to get this much, so we're going to go up, which doesn't really make a lot of sense, but it's confusing. Would have been a lot easier to do it the other way.
It's a matter of experience. The way I've always done it is we grossed them up. So people get, you know, the net amount. But I'm fine, I'm fine with this. I thank you to all the staff trying to figure this out. It was complicated, and first time through, it always is. So-
So I'm going to give you the motions and the numbers, and if you can just make a, so moved on the motions, all right. So the $250 stipend will be grossed up to $349. The $500 will be $600.
Two what? Three what?
Well, if I just read them, you can just say, so moved.
Okay, okay.
All right. So the $250 stipend will gross up at $349. We have 14 people. $500 stipend is grossed up to $697. We have 18 employees. $1,000 stipend is grossed up to $1392, at 16 employees. And the $2,000 is grossed up to $2784, and you have 10 employees.
I make a motion to approve as read. I'll second. Any comment?
Thank you, Jen. Prove your work on this. The way it's being done is exactly how I understood it through the budget process. This dollar amount, you'd end up with that dollar amount.
Exactly.
And thank you for that, Tom.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
So those will be paper checks?
Yeah, great.
Might get them this week, we'll see.
Well, that's fine. Again, thank you for your efforts on, and the staff. I know-
Yes, Kelly has been right beside me.
Kelly's been right in this, so terrific. Okay, agenda policy.
So again, Tom and I kind of worked on some of these items, not knowing yet that our dear Kimberly wouldn't be back with us. But as I understand it, I'm drafting something, and we're going to put a memo together for you to approve next week, but wanted you guys to talk about it. That essentially is going to say, I think what you mentioned earlier, is that really anything coming from a department or committee, that we're going to have, he's going to have, you're going to have a first reading on it, if you will. So you take that hazardous mitigation plan, for example, that it's going to be, that they know in advance there's a first reading. The question is, we're going to figure out where we're going to draw the line. So let's just say we have the road commissioners' scope of works. Will those, where do we differentiate with our committees and department heads? What's going to need a first reading, what's not? Obviously, anything of substance or detailed something, you know, depending on how much information is, bids, those kind of things. But how do we feel about the boys' scopes of work? I mean, or, David, we haven't asked you how you feel about the whole thing altogether.
I understand a part of it. Some of the stuff that I do, I do think it's a good idea, like, you know, the fire department thing, yeah, that's, but, I mean, most of the stuff's on every week. You know, if we don't resolve it, we end up, you know, pushing on to next week anyways. So I don't know if we really need a policy for it. I'm not a big policy guy. I think that's something we just kind of go with the flow. But, but yeah, that would be kind of a, we got to figure out exactly if we did that. Jen's right. Do the road commissioners, because like you said, we looked at their budgeting.
Yeah.
Do you take time to look at that? Do you table that for a week? Or do we make that decision that night?
Let me back up. And I think if there is a transaction, an agreement, a contract that effectively is an exception to policy, then I think, I think that should be presented at a meeting. So we have time to consider that and vote it on, vote on it in the next meeting. We can always waive that. We're in the meeting. We can, you know, we could, but for example, if there is a request for not following our standard policies on procurement, employment, whatever it might be, that I think we just need, I'd like an opportunity to be briefed on that, rather than someone showing up and expecting a decision right then and there.
Oh, no, you're right. Yeah, that's definitely-
And so how best to define that? I'm not sure I would necessarily include the scope of work documents that, that the-
Well, I guess the best thing to do on this is, you know, draft something up.
Yeah.
When Kim's back, I mean, this is something, obviously she wants to be involved in.
Sure.
And see if, you know, it makes sense. And I do, some of it does. I just, I want to make sure it doesn't get caught up in something else.
I agree. We don't want to be taking more time and wasting people's time with department heads coming in at two meetings. Some of these may not require they be here. I was talking to the chief beforehand. I said, I don't think you need to come in for two meetings to do this. Just get us the document with an explanation of what you're trying to do. And that can be in a quick memo. We'll look at it. And at one meeting, we can ask any questions we want, and, you know.
So some of the stuff that we get, some of the stuff we do every year, it's just renewals.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Let me put something together. We'll run it back in and go from there.
Yeah, and I'm happy to help you with this, okay?
Okay.
Very good. Any comment on that before we go on? All right. Agenda, petition policy.
So we had, we had talked about-
Yes, this was my doing last-
So we talked about putting a draft together, basically, David, that's going to say, you know, any person who wants to create a petition can submit it to the town administrator for legal advice from MAA Municipal. So whether we believe that MAA Municipal will get themselves involved or not in it, we'll send them all, and we'll attach, you know, MMA will tell you when it's not, it's outside of their scope. So it's going to be very brief. It's just going to give everybody the opportunity for any petition article, if they present it in writing, to send it to MAA Municipal. And they take the chances of whether or not MMA replies, or MAA says, seek legal counsel.
And if they, and if they respond, it's out of their scope, then there will be no further involvement by the town. We will not send it to Land Use Council or anyone else. This is really, because we have an available service that is free of charge, truly free of charge, then we'll make that available, but we will not go any further.
Yep. No, that's a good idea. Want to vote on this. Table is for next week. So Kim, can we?
Yeah, I don't have that, I mean, knowing-
No, it's fine. You're going to draft the policy.
I got it. I'll have it ready.
Any public comment on this? Okay. Parking lot, town hall and transfer station. And Robin has-
He has gone off to, I think, call.
He's, yeah. I had a chance to meet with Robin today, and David, I suspect you talked with him about some of his thoughts about doing that up there. And quite frankly, I thought he had a lot of good ideas. And then we also have the need to address the parking lot here.
Yes, and the old gym building.
And I would, typically for a project like this, it's been my experience to engage a site engineer, to come in, take-
Talk about doing that.
To come in, someone who can look at this site, look at what our plans are for the transfer station, talk to people that have information that could, that like Robin or others, that can describe what we might do here, and provide some plans, if you will, for how we might approach those projects.
I think all we really have to do is, we got, the biggest thing we got to do is figure out what we're going to do with the old building.
Exactly.
Because we can't bring, because I, when we were doing our budget, and we were talking about the $10,000 put forward-
Yeah.
For the engineer to check this place out. And so I'll go with this, as long as we can use the money that's left over, or whatever, towards building the parking lot. Because between handicap spaces, all that stuff there, making the transition down, you know, by-
The slope here is a challenge.
Done it right that way there, you go boom, now you can send it out to bid. It's legit. And, but the problem is, we can't really have an engineer come in here until we figure out what we're going to do with that building.
I would agree. And not just what are we going to do with that building, but I think they also ought to help us think about what the future development of this site might look like. Because I think that could perhaps impact, for instance, when, if that building comes down, is that just going to be an open space? Are there, perhaps the capital planning committee could provide their thoughts on that. We'll get, so I think all that is a data set that could be incorporated into some thinking by a site engineer to help us think about that, before we just go ahead and pave it over.
Well, I think we talked about having a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's good. Yeah.
That way, we can bring the public in.
Yeah.
Say, hey, we want to rip the building down, or maybe not, but this is what we're proposing.
Yeah.
Want to make some more parking down here, because remember, we don't own this up here.
No, no, I understand. No, I understand. So we got to connect to it, and, yeah.
So this is an opportunity where we can be able to make some parking, or do something else down there, at that public hearing, maybe where we might actually get, you're going to get more ideas, I think.
Yeah.
You know, the capital improvement committee can do their thing, too. But I think we may get a variety of ideas, and then they might be able to actually pick up on those ideas and run with them.
Yeah.
But we really have to, if we're going to get working on this parking lot, we really got to put together a public hearing to discuss that.
That's great.
I think. Because that's kind of a big deal when you start ripping down buildings with town of Acton.
Yeah. I would agree. I would also like to incorporate in that some consideration of aesthetics as we're doing this. I think there may be an opportunity to sort of enhance the street view of the complex. And so how to approach that in an economical, yet thoughtful way. So if we're going to engage somebody to do it here, I presume the same firm could also assist us with the transfer station. So have we got a, is there, are there resources? Is there a budget to engage a firm like that?
Really?
Possibly. I mean, depending on what we come up with.
Okay, so we think there may be some, so maybe you could, maybe we'd get the treasurer to help develop what we think might be available.
We've got all that money set aside for the parking lot.
Yeah.
That money can be used for the engineering for that parking lot.
But how about the transfer station?
The transfer station, I don't know what we can get the engineer in for. That's just to renew the parking lot, is what he's talking about, right?
We're at the, no, he's talking about an access road, and, oh, no, no, it's, well, why don't we ask Robin to come to our next meeting, and he can describe some of his thoughts there? Or maybe we do a site visit, David. We can go up there and, with Kim, and have him, you know, walk us through what his plans, I thought he had some good ideas, so, but I have no idea what this is going to cost, and it's all going to come down to how much money-
It's a whole something you probably won't be able to do this year, because we didn't-
No, no, this is not for this year, but, but we might have the engineering, if it makes sense, to have the same, maybe it's two separate projects, but we might be able to roll it together as well.
Do you want to pick a date for the public hearing, so at least we can be scheduled, we can be running it for a few weeks?
Yeah. Today is the 13th.
On the first Wednesday in August?
Yes. I, I think the select board needs to talk about how we're going to sort of manage that public hearing. I mean, which is not just, is it just people coming in, providing their comments? Will there be some information provided at the hearing about, I don't know, I just want to think through that, how that works.
It's pretty much one of those deals where you're going to have to open up the meetings, you know, this is what we're up against. We've got this money here.
Yeah.
We want to do some renovations.
Yeah.
We're, and I think right now, consensus on this board right now is, you know, that building has to be dealt with.
Yeah.
And when we come up with that, that's when it should flood in with the information.
And it's important for you to have something to lay out.
Why don't we go another, why don't we go around August, around mid-August? Because I, I think we need to prep for this and make sure that we've, we've got our thoughts together, so that then the people that come to the hearing can react to that and give their own thoughts on it. Makes sense? Okay.
Excuse me. Capital Improvement, as you know, needs more people, but three of us have been in touch with each other. And one of the things I was going to approach, Jen, later at the end of this meeting, to ask to be on the agenda for the, we would like a request for a quote. We have $10,000 that was-
For this building?
Well, actually, that $10,000 will do more than this building.
Okay.
The one company that we had been in touch with, looking for information, not asking for a bid or a quote, that would have covered a lot of what you were talking about, a lot of different places, not, not just this building. So it'd be really up to us how to use that.
Up to who?
The town.
The town.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, up to the town.
Yeah, yeah.
All of us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we would like to be on the agenda for that next week. And I will need help from you, probably, writing a proper proposal for a quote.
Yeah, so we're not going to have the quote ready for next week?
No, no.
Okay. So you want to be on the agenda to talk about the quote?
I think, well, you might not have the-
And have you guys met since town meeting?
Sorry?
I mean, have you guys met as a committee since the town meeting? I said, I know you said you've been in contact, because I haven't gotten anybody sworn in. So have you guys had a meeting since town meeting?
No, no, we have not had a meeting, but this was what we had going already, that we would-
So the agenda item is to, just to discuss the RFP with the board?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, exactly. Present that to the board, exactly.
Well, you're going to have an RFP to present, or you're going to, you have some concepts you want to present?
We have both, but we've got to get, the only way we can hire-
I understand. I get the impression, when she asked if you'd have an RFP, you said no, I thought, unless I misunderstood that.
No, you don't have an R, he's asking if you have an RFP put together, but-
No, I do not have one, but that's something the-
So-
No, I understand that, but-
But I would like to have one for next week.
An RFP?
To present to you all.
So she's saying she wants us to present us with an RFP. We should be writing the RFP.
Well, why don't you do, you-
Well, I don't understand why that would happen.
Well-
We don't have committees making up RFPs. We just don't do that. When have we ever done that? Did the whole, the capital improvement come to the select board and ask to put forward $10,000? We put $10,000 forward and warrant, on the warrant, we put the RFP forward, not the-
How you've done it in mass.
Would it be reasonable for, to ask you to get information from Joyce that would be part of an RFP process that we could draft?
This is what I said, why I would want to see Jennifer, because this is what-
So, so it's being-
Taking what we presented to you.
I got it, yeah, I got it. So Jennifer, could you, I'm worried about your workload, to be honest with you. I mean, you've got a lot going on, especially with the new treasurer and things. So for you to be able to do this in the next week, I don't think is realistic.
Yeah, I mean, two weeks would be, would be better.
Two weeks. So, so why don't you meet with Jennifer? Jennifer, you know what the requirements are for an RFP?
I do. I don't-
Pick her brain, get whatever.
I don't know what the board is, yeah, what we're looking, I don't know what, this is for the, an RFP for the engineering firm?
Yes, yeah.
Exactly. You know, and what we think you're looking for.
Well, I mean, we could do the RFP for, say, the inspection of this building.
Yes.
But you can't put an RFP out on the parking lot until you actually have some idea what you're going to do.
Right. What are you looking specifically, what is the committee, what was the vote of the committee for RFP for what, specifically?
If, in fact, the report we wrote, what would have been included, would have been this property, the entire property, which means the parking lot, it means the gym. We actually included the parking lot at the fire department, which has its own issues. That would have been included with the expert that we had talked to. And he said, you know, you're talking $10,000. So, you know, it's not-
I understand that.
Okay?
I think the way it could be developed is, is if you broke it up, and they effectively bid on the various components. What is the cost for doing the assessment of this complex, including the parking? What is the cost for assessing the parking lot down at the fire station? Were there any other properties that were initially considered?
We left it to town property.
Okay.
And this particularly property, and the fire station.
Yeah. So if we have that as part of a draft RFP, then I think the selectmen can look at that and decide which of those components we want to move forward with, in terms of an RFP, in consideration. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, I-
It's not that my committee wants to write this. We would like to get the ball rolling.
I understand. Well, we want your input. You're the ones that, you've studied this, and so I'm familiar with this process, but you folks have spent time on it, and so we ought to make sure that we incorporate that. But as David points out, clearly Jennifer or the town has got to actually author this RFP. And I know you appreciate that.
Well, no, it just sounded, it just sounded the way, it was we, we, I want to show you talking capital improvement, or us. When you say we, it was a lot of we's. I just wanted to make sure we're all the same.
We is mostly the town, I think.
Well, I hope so. I hope that's the way we're talking about. I just, I just don't want to get wires crossed, to think that the capital improvement would be doing any more than they, they have to.
I think we've just clarified that.
I think we have.
Okay.
Oh, David, one thing.
Yeah.
When, when I asked about the parking lot.
Yeah.
I did look back under our ordinances.
Yeah.
And it's Article 5.11.13 on page 62.
Yeah. Okay. And that says what?
It says for every 10 to 20 spaces, I read it on my phone, so you have to have an island or a berm. I mean, it's-
For commercial, though. That's under commercial zone?
I did not read it under commercial, but-
I'll check with the-
Generally, is the town, is the town subject to the zoning ordinance?
That's a town ordinance.
Yeah, no, she might be right, but-
I know, but David, like-
Oh, I understand that. I understand that.
This is what we said when we were at the commercial property.
Well, I got, if we think it's unrealistic for us-
We'd have to go to town meeting to vote it down.
Well, but if we think it's not necessarily a good, a good item, then maybe we should ask the planning boy to-
To look at it.
Reconsider that, and whether or not that-
Well, you still have to bring it to-
No, I understand that. No, I understand.
So what this, what this would actually do right now is put the kibosh to that job right down the street.
I'm pretty sure it references commercial properties. Let me look into it from the CEO.
Check that out, because you wouldn't want the kibosh on it.
No, no, no.
No, that's what it would do. Because you're a little there, they're having a hard time making enough spot-
We're going to try to find a way of, of doing this, moving this forward and not violating any of our own policies, okay?
Thank you.
Yes. Any further discussion on those items? Oh, okay. Appointments.
We have one appointment tonight, and that is for Mr. Rumah, for the capital improvement committee.
Okay.
I make a motion to appoint Joseph Rumah to the capital improvement committee until